Okay.
Thank you. Good evening and welcome to the monthly meeting in Yount County Council for Monday, January 24th, 2022. I'd like to call this meeting to order. First off, we need a motion to approve the agenda. Moved by Council Jones. Could I have seconded? Seconded by Deputy Mayor Ed Chad. All those in favor raise a hand. And you have a question, Linda? Oh, we have to amend that. Sorry. My mistake. We've got an amendment to add to it. Item number eight. We have a legal matter to discuss, so we'll be doing that in camera at the end of our other business. So now may I have a motion to approve the amended agenda?
Oh, move.
So moved by Council Jones, seconded by Council Black. And all those in favor, raise a hand. Motion carried. Thank you. Okay, new business. First off, we are going to swear in the new deputy fire chief, Kyle Rushton. Kyle's with us there. Kyle, you're on mute right now.
Just one minute. Yeah. Just one minute. We got to prove the previous minutes there.
Okay, you've got the previous minutes in front of you. They're in your package. Going to have a motion to approve them. Moved by Council McDonald, seconded by Council Jones. All those in favor, raise a hand. We'll slow it down a bit. Okay, carry. Motion carried. Now we will deal with swearing in of the new deputy mayor for the town of Oxford Fire Department. Deputy Fire Chief, pardon me. I'm having a rough day. Kyle, you've got a copy of the pledge in front of you.
Yeah, yes, I do.
Would you like to read that to us, please?
Sure, you're ready?
We're ready.
All right. I, Kyle Purdy, swear that I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to Her Majesty Queen Elizabeth II, her heirs, successors according to law, in that I'm duly qualified as required by law for the Office of Fire Ward Deputy Chief of the Town of Oxford, in that I will truly faithfully and partially execute the duties of the office to which I have been elected to the best of my knowledge and abilities, in that I have not and will not receive any payment or reward or promise thereof for the exercise of any partiality of undue execution of the duties of my office.
Wonderful. Thank you. Congratulations and welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Okay. Next up, we have some reports. No, next up, we have the 2021 boards and committees. There's an update on it. The website committee membership would like to welcome public appointee Mark Rushton to that committee. We thank Mark for joining us on this endeavor to put up a much nicer website. And from what we've seen so far, it's looking good. We appreciate your input. Report.
Just one moment. Could we get a motion to accept that from council?
Okay, we're going to revise. Okay, so moved by Deputy Mayor Ed Chad, seconded by Council Jones. All those in favor of adopting the amended, please raise a hand. Motion carried. Thank you. Next up, Public Works. Linda, you're going to speak, I guess. You're on mute, Linda.
Thank you, Your Worship. Okay. Public Works report. So they had some water breaks in the last month. This is a December report. There was water breaks down James Street by Town Hall, also at 6685 Little River Road. They had a total of 21 water breaks for the year of 2021. Public Works worked hard and did well with decorating the town for the Christmas and also the Christmas parade. They had installed a mailbox and also the new sign for the library. So please take a drive by and take a look and also drop off your books to return at the library. They had to mount the TV at the Town Hall that was required with our conference center, so they had done that. There was a sewer that was repaired at 58 Ella Street and also 370 Founder Street. Also, there was an incident on December 8th that there was a plugged main sewer line in McCormick's was called in with the back truck. So they're working on a solution to prevent this from happening. They've cut brushes around town that interferes with snow removal. They've met with Dylan to go over the directives that are being prepared by them. And actually, there's another meeting this coming Thursday on that. They have salted when necessary, and they have done regular duties. So this was submitted by Fire's Town Supervisor Wes Ed Chad.
Okay. Anybody have any questions regarding the Public Works report? Okay, next up, we'll go to the Fire Department report. I'll read that. I have it in front of me. Fire report for December. They had nine calls for the month of December, six mutual aid calls to assist neighboring departments, one residential fire alarm, one structure fire, and one grass bush fire. Of these seven calls, of these calls, seven were in the county and two were within the town. They finished off the year 2021 with a total of 70 calls. BCI was in and provided training on electric vehicles. Clean Heroes report came back and five sets of bunker gear of gear need to be sent out for repairs. Department received three new breathing apparatuses, which made were made possible by the emergency service provider fund. Department completed extensive fire review that was ordered by the county. Connors was in and serviced the SCBA fill station and compressor. Cell phones in the trucks have not been working. The department would like to have tablets put in two trucks to help with mapping, navigation, mapping documentation and communications while attending calls. They're also having an issue with phones at the hall. Only one phone is ringing. So if it's not on the app, on the apparatus four, calls can be missed. This is the report for December. We have a couple of firemen here. If anyone has any questions regarding that, that'd be a good time to do it. I don't see anybody's hands up, so we will take that. And next, we have the finance report. And I think Ruth Ann is giving that. Am I, is that right? So we'll call on our accountant, Ruth Ann. And Ruth Ann, the floor is yours.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to go through this basically section by section, just just so you know where we're at. I did different columns, what our budget was after the third quarter. We do have most of the invoices in up till the end of December. There's still some Januaries not in. So basically, this is the third quarter in what what I project for the year end. If we don't have any big expenditures come up that I can't foresee in the next two months. So the last column is the percentage of of the projected year end to the budget. So you're able to compare what I projected year into what we thought we would have. Now, the revenue is looking good. We had a great year for D transfer tax. We predicted 12,000, which was even a little higher than normal, but we come in at, we already have 62,000. So if things keep up, I'm thinking we're going to have 70,000 in in that slot. I did highlight in red anything that is like over 25% on one side or the other. So those sort of stick out. The basically, the other revenues, there was, there's people work very hard to get some grants for recreational programs. And that certainly showed up here in the revenues with special program registrations. When you look at own source re revenue, this is all still on page one, one of five. And as well, we also have more interest on taxes. I might not be a good thing because it kind of indicates people are slower at paying their taxes. So but there was an increase in revenue in tax certificates again because of the great year in house sales. So revenues were up. The other big revenue increase is the municipality grant doubled this year. So this is in unconditional transfers. It's used to call it the equalization grant, but now it's called municipality capacity grant. And they doubled the payments for municipalities this year. So most municipalities are having a great year. Like just because they weren't expecting this. And so, yes, you see that's up 197% in the unconditional transfers. We also had there was a $5,800 program registration. There's also an $1,800 grant that was received for recreational and general expenditures. So that was a great additive to our revenues that was not expected. So total revenues, when you figure all this in, is at 114% this year. So when you look at the expenses, Didie, might have any questions on that before I get into the expenses?
Ruth Ann, oh, go ahead, Deputy Mayor Ed Chad.
Yeah.
Ruth Ann, that recreation money that we've gotten for the rink and for the ball field, did you say that was included in our revenue for this year?
Not for the rink. This is not rink. This is can, this was all the special programs that Crystal McNutt had put on throughout the summer. This really has nothing to do with the rink.
We're getting a $92,000 grant and I believe we're getting another 15 for the ball field. That's not included in any of this calculations, correct?
Correct. Now, we did just receive the 92,000. Oh, okay. So I'm going to take you back on this page one, on the arena lease payment for expenses. I guess that's, we received a $92,000. That's where that is sitting. The thing about the arena lease payment expenses and anything in the orange or the gray, they do not make a difference in the income statement because it's balanced out by the exact amount of expenses because I had them on deferred revenues. So that that just means it's not going to affect our budget one way or the other. I just want you to see that we had received monies and how much went into the to in and out. So the arena lease payment for expenses, that's how much they have paid us so far for using the rink. That would be electricity and that would gas bills. So so far, they've paid us $6,900. Now, of course, these are the expensive months coming up, and we haven't been billed for January and February and March. So my prediction is by the end of the March 31st, our year end, they will have given us 38,000. And if you look down in the expenses, you'll see where those expenses come right back out again. So they just goes into revenue and comes out of expenses. And that's the same with the COVID dollars because the COVID dollars are not. We receive that money. I put it deferred revenue, and as we spend it, I take it out of deferred revenue. So the expenses should match the revenues for.
Okay, but my question is regarding the $92,000 that we got for our rank grant from the province in the last couple of weeks and the $15,000 announcement to the ball field. None of that is included in this budget, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so that will be next year into next year's budget because that's when we're going to be doing that work, correct?
If it's the lease, it's their money to spend, not ours.
It's not, it's not the least, though. The provinces come out with, what, a million dollars for rinks in the province? And we got a lot at $92,000 of that money. Is that it? Is that in this year's budget right now or is that being pushed off to next year?
We haven't spent it. We have received it, but we haven't spent it. So yeah, it's not reflected in here.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Okay.
I have a quick question as well. Just out of curiosity, in the equalization grant, you know, capacity grant showing 356,000 approximately, is that that is that to double the amount?
Yes, it is. Okay. We we were expecting 178. We have received two quarters. We will receive the last two quarters once I have the year end in.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah. Anybody else have a question? Go ahead, Council Jones.
Just a clarification on Deputy Mayor Ed Chad's comment that the money was in there. It is in there, but from what I understand Ruth Ann said, but so are the expenses. So one washes out the other.
Exactly. But we haven't had any expenses to put against 92,000, so it's not, it's not showing in there.
Okay.
Yeah, it's in the deferred revenue so that we don't, we're not, it's not showing his income because it truly isn't until weekend against the proper expenses. Yeah.
Anyone else have a question before Ruth Ann carries on? Carry on, please.
Okay. So in the expenses, okay, so the first page is page number two. If you look at general government and all the different expenses we have for keeping the lights on, as I would say, as well as a few borrowings we've had. So you look down there, there's not too much that stands out. The audit fee was higher than we expected this year. There is $12,000 spent in for misstatements from previous years in the time that they had to spend with the previous audit auditor gathering information from previous years. And then the auditor, our previous auditor also charged for his time with them. So that was an unexpected 12,000 that didn't foresee coming. What else would be there? We're, we've cut back in the IT expenses mainly that's from cutting back on Microsoft users. The number of users here at the Town Hall has been cut back. Same way with Town Suite. Our expenses are lower than I originally thought, just getting rid of some users since we no longer have as many people staffed here. And same with telephones. Expenses went down there significantly. Town Hall maintenance, it went up. That had to do with fixing the heat again. So that's always a nice little bill. So that's, we were hoping we'd have a couple of years with the new plumbing that they had put in the previous year, but we did end up having to call them back this year for more repair. So there's a couple that I just did not budget properly, and one was those dues. That's why it's so high. I left out an annual fee. That was a normal annual fee. So that's a whole lot. Bank service charges, we did really well this year, and there's two reasons for that. Well, I guess most, the biggest reason is there's better cash flow. We have, we still have that COVID COVID cushion in there. So we're not in overdraft for the last three or four months like we have been in previous years. And so there's been no overdraft charges this year at all. We also had the municipality grant helping out with cash. So cash flow was not the problem this year as it was previously. Credit cards, we reduced those from, I think there was like six, and we reduce those down to three. So we've done some savings there. The protective services for police. Actually, I got the bill in today. That figure in there, I'm going to be adjusting because the actual projected year end is 497,000. I was waiting for the last bill to actually put it in to make sure that we receive the $7,000 savings that we're supposed to there. And so that will be a little lower than than what you see there. Everybody okay for me to go on or?
No questions for Ruth Ann?
So the fire department, all looks good there. If you see the bottom line, and it's kind of interesting to look at the bottom line, even at the general government, we're in it. Things go along as they have been. And no big expenditures. We're at 93% of what we were reaching for budget. The fire department's at 95%. And again, that's if there's no big expenditures. A fire truck doesn't blow an engine or something. So in the next two months. Emergency management is right on par, same as other protective services, like our building inspection. And those are standard payments, so they're pretty easy to judge. Skipping back up here to the fire, you'll notice the the fire truck fuel is higher than anticipated, and that would have to do with the fuel price. We also found that in the transportation into that there was a more more fuel cost. The transportation services, they're be at 100% as long as we don't have any big huge repairs. And in the next two months, if we just maintain as go along with our standard, we did catch a break there. We only had one summer student. We had actually budgeted for two. So that our small tools and equipment was up significantly. However, when I looked at previous years, we kind of went really low in our budget. We said 4,800. Previous years show that we've spent 13,000 in there and 8,400. So looking at previous years, it's not that bad. But OPH hall expenses, we actually didn't have to do a roof repairs in there. We still have some handrails and small repairs to do there. So I included those in the projected year end.
Ruth Ann?
Yes.
Can I ask a question before I forget?
Yeah.
What what did we purchase to put the small tools for Public Works up so high this year?
Gee, there's a big list of stuff from home hardware. I could go over it with you, Brenton, at some point. No problem. But we'd have to give out some invoices.
It's just an accumulation of small.
It's an accumulation of a lot of small bills.
Okay.
Yeah. There's no big, there's no big item, and I'm going to just check to make sure that that's correct in my budget, that I didn't have anything in there. Yeah, no, I don't see any any big items. I listed. So it's just a lot of looking on my other spreadsheet to see if I had any listed, but no. Okay.
Ruth Ann, I have a quick question for you. That percentage, is that where it's at now or where you expect it to be?
Where I expect it to be.
To be, okay. Just wanted clarification.
Yeah, we're expected to be if all goes well.
First, sounds good. Thank you.
Yeah.
One, one question, if I may. I know previously when I was on council, the chairman for each committee would approve invoices on a monthly basis. And we talked about bringing that policy back, but that would maybe help, you know, purchases of small tools if it seemed to be getting out of hand rather than, you know, letting it happen for six months. I don't, I'm not saying this is out of hand, but I'm just saying it's it's another set of eyes. And right now, there's no checks and balances like there used to be. So I'm wondering what everybody thinks of maybe going back to somewhat the same policies we used to have.
Okay, there's food for thought. Linda, do you want to just sort of make a note to that? And we will cow meeting, bring that up and start looking at it?
Okay. So see any more other questions on those? Those entries, there is, I went through the transportation services fairly quick. You'll notice each one of the vehicles have their own, their own line, like the town truck and van are together, but the loader and the plow and the tractor to Kubota. We actually didn't get the Kubota till later in the year. So we act, we actually had a little legal room in there to buy that snow blower. So that that was good. In the salt truck, they're all kind of dead on. Let me see, the rest of it, again, gasoline is up or diesel's up. I mean, gasoline's not. Clothing was up. That was my miscalculation. I don't know why I put the wrong number in there. So anyway, that was. Health and safety is up big time, and that's because we had to, we made it a priority to get some better health and safety procedures here. So that became a priority. We needed more money for it. Environmental health services, that's your sewer and your garbage. Basically, it's right on par. If things continue on at the end of the year, we'll be in at 99%. Public health and environmental development, that's medical center and planning with Amherst and community economic development. That sort of stuff, that's going to come in a little higher than what we anticipated. And that has to do with the deficit regional housing authority bill. I've been back and forth with this fella a lot about this bill because he received a lot of calls because a lot of people's bills went up. Their costs went up significantly in COVID. And and so the prediction was a lot higher than what I thought it would be because I just went by history. So it's, it's a significant difference there from 24 to 38,000. The recreation and cultural arena did, that has a mixture of those gray, the COVID and the stuff paid by the arena committee. And and I just wanted you to see what they're paying compared to us in the the this season for the rink. So basically, our electricity, I underestimated it. It should probably will still be costing us around 12,000. And right now, we're at 9,200 for maintenance. That that was basically the ceiling tape and a few other things and the gas that we will pay. I overestimate that. I really didn't put enough time into figuring those out for the budget. So next year, I'll hope to do better on those. But basically, all in all, it's it's going to come out just as we predicted. The fields and library. There was more money spent on Christmas lights this year. We had a beautiful Christmas display. But that was because we had some extra money from a grant that was going to be spent. And we actually did not spend as much in fields and library as we had put in the budget in total anyway. So even with the extra, it came in at 85%, unless there's some more being going to be spent before the end of March. And there may be theater. It's looking good. We actually there's something wrong with that sewer bill there. I meant to look into that. That's probably just an internal posting problem. So it'll probably be up around 112, it won't be 100 because the theater maintenance is actually only at 50%. Well, it's, you know, we're going to spend 2,000 so far. We've only spent 600. I'm not aware of any big things that need to be done, but if something breaks, you want to have a little money there for the next two months to fix it. So recreation, same thing, we, those percentages are are way up because we received a lot of money to spend in those areas through grants. Yes.
Council McNutt, go ahead.
Ruth Ann, before we move on, if I understand correctly, we had allotted
Three thousand dollars in the recreation budget and we haven't touched any of it yet, correct?
That's correct. I think I sent you an email this afternoon. I had. Yes, and I think it's more like twenty-six hundred.
Okay, so I'm going to spend a little bit left of that eighteen hundred for the county grant. Um before a year end, but if I go over that, it's fine because we have the money allotted anyway.
Yeah, we headed in the budget. Um uh now, I didn't put it in my project it because I wasn't aware that there'd be something else going on in March. But yeah, that's, you know, neither here nor there. It's it's uh we we actually, you know, very thankful that you fellows. Get the grants.
Right.
Yeah, okay, so uh fiscal services turned out just. Uh right on what we wanted it to. So all in all, if if everything goes well these next two months, we'll come in at. A hundred and two percent of our what we're budgeted to spend. Now, our net income is going to look a lot better this year because of the municipality. Capacity grant that we received and de-transfer tax and uh. But uh we'll be able to put that money back into reserves for sure.
You could say good governance, Ruth Ann.
I was just really happy to say to see positive numbers. I like I like this black not being in the red, so.
Well, we like it as well.
Yeah.
Very much a very concise and good report. Does anybody else have any more questions for Ruth Ann?
Brenton?
Yeah. Yeah, well, more of a statement than anything since we're in the process of talking about budget stuff for last year. I really think that this year and we need to look at something for sidewalks, no removal. The tractor that we have, as you can tell, is absolutely useless when we get snow like this. We had a trackless one time, but I guess it was said that we didn't need the trackless, but I guess these last couple of storms showed that we do. Because that little tractor, you can't get through it with that tractor and we're having to clean all the sidewalks with with a loader. So it's something that, just something to think about when it comes budget time, we might want to think about that.
One question, what about that uh uh? Snow blower that we just bought, will that help that? A front-end snow blower, there was money left in the budget.
Well, that snow blower is no good for snow like this. They were, they were out there with the tractor with that little plow on the front of it trying to move snow. It's just, it's just no point.
No, but a snow blower would work on that snow, would it not?
Not it, not with, not the amount of snow that we had, uh councillor Jones, it's too small. We had that track, we had that trackless machine. That thing would go through four or five feet of snow. It had a big Cummings engine in it. And uh it was decided at some point that they didn't need that anymore. Well, I guess we do. That every town in Nova Scotia, New Brunswick, and everywhere else has one of them. I know they're expensive, but it might be something we want to think of. If we want to get the sidewalks cleans within a week, I mean, we still have sidewalks that aren't opened up yet. Because they can't get through them with a tractor. They have to use the loader. So anyway, just something to think about.
Okay, food for thought. Anything else for Ruth Ann?
I do have the water budget there, if you want to go through that as well. Not bored of numbers yet. Just um the water budget is is there as well. There's only two pages of that, so uh. Um basically, um. It's it's going well is is very well as well. So if you notice, there is uh, there was a unusual high consumption last um. Quarter for oxer frozen foods, so that boosted our numbers up a little and will boost our numbers up a fair amount for this year. Uh since they are bigger biggest consumer, so that that was. Why our revenues have increased there and as well. Uh the expense side of things, uh we. There was some misallocation of invoices, so the these numbers um. That should have went in one category, went in another. That's why you see three hundred and eleven percent there, but. Um when I do the budget this year, I I know exactly where things should go, so hopefully next year that that won't happen, so. Uh basically, uh we did. Um come in. Little higher than what we wanted to, even with those miscalculations. Because of there was a five thousand dollar spend on um. To do with a treatment that we weren't expecting and also in transmission and distribution. Uh that flow meters in there for oxer frozen foods and as well um. There were some unexpected um costs and an increase in price when replacing the water main and water street that he budgeted for. That year, um so there was, and there was extra spins because because they run into more problems once they predict it, so. Instead, there is probably thirty-five thousand dollars more there spent than anticipated. So the spends were up in water, however, it still looks good for the objective year end. To get some money back into water capital for some some major um work that we need to get done.
Excellent. Thank you. Anybody else have any more questions for Ruth Ann? Probably tired of talking. Okay, uh councillor Colburn, you got a question or no?
On the, it's just something that was mentioned a while back about the chlorination system. We were talking about spending uh. Six thousand dollars or something for a different chlorinator because it wouldn't keep up. Is that correct? They had trouble with keeping their uh their residual up?
Yes, and that's um. There, yeah, and there was a spend. In there for unexpected costs for chlorine treatment due to high consumption, and that was a seven thousand dollar spend in there.
Did we already spend that?
We spent something there.
I'm I'm just wondering, Ruth Ann, maybe you know, maybe you don't, but you could ask the question. Did we have both chlorine systems running? Did we have the hypochlorite system that's running that's at the actual tank? See, we have one in my in Mansfield and we have another system right at the tank itself. Were both of those running and we still couldn't keep up or was just one running? Do you know?
I'm not sure. I'll ask that question. I I know that Wes said he's never seen it like.
Yeah.
Um in such a a condition that.
Yeah, because see, we have a back, we have a backup system at actually at the tank that you can turn on also.
Yeah, yeah.
And it's a different, it's a different system. You actually use uh, it's liquid instead of gas, so anyway. Rather, if we don't have to spend that money, if that, you know, that backup system may do the job, that's all. Okay, thank you.
Okay, I'll uh ask the question.
Okay, um no one else has any questions? We have a motion, we uh accept these reports as presented, moved by councillor Jones. Said by councillor McNutt, all those in favor of accepting the three reports, raise a hand please. Oh, motion carried. Thank you. Uh next up, we're on to some committee updates. We'll start with occupational health and safety of. Going to call on Linda, go ahead, please, Linda.
Okay, thank you, worship. Uh so with occupational health and safety, uh we will be meeting here within the next week. Uh for our next meeting, but uh we have the emergency first aid booked for all the staff. As well as a few other members of the community over at the Legion on February third. Uh so just uh just update everybody on our occupational health and safety. So we just finished our WMS uh fall arrest and uh. There was one other, oh, they just did another course that they needed as well. Um so all those have been just completed and we're moving on to emergency first aid. Okay, just for an update.
Excellent. Thank you, Linda. Uh next up, accessibility committee councillor McDonald.
Uh we have nothing to report. We have a, we have a meeting. Second week in February, do we not, Linda?
Yes, that's correct. Yes, we'll be planning one uh just with January. We couldn't hold any in inside meetings. Uh just due to COVID right now and to be accessible to everyone, uh we need to have in person for this group here, so.
Uh next up, we have a Rina committee councillor Colburn, Jones and McDonald. One of you giving a report, please?
I have nothing to report at this time unless the other, one of the other two members may have.
Uh the only thing I would have to report is I I think the uh. Uh the society that's taking over the ring are doing a fantastic job. If anybody has a minute that they could walk through. Uh I think you'd be quite surprised at the how our old arena looks new, so uh hats off to them is all I've got to say. Thank you.
Excellent, thank you. Okay, uh next up, we have the audit committee councillor Black.
Uh we don't really have anything to report. We have a meeting tomorrow night, so we'll have more next.
You'll have a big report next meeting.
Yes.
Excellent, thank you. Uh economic uh community economic development committee, that would be councillor McDonald.
Well, we just had a committee meeting uh the seventeenth of January. We had a Jonathan give us a pre- presentation. Other than that. We have another meeting uh projected for April. Nothing else to report.
Okay, thank you. Uh fire department committee councillor McDonald or Colburn?
I really have not much to report other than uh, and I guess uh. We've already decided at some point that uh fire hydrants need to be met of a bit more of a priority to get the hydrants open up in case of a fire. A lot of the hydrants were blocked there for like five days and if the fire department had to get into them, it would have been very difficult in case of a fire. I know there's lots of other things to do, but they need to be kind of a priority before you do sidewalks and side streets and whatever. That's it for me. As councillor McDonald may have something to add.
No, okay. Uh procurement committee uh councillor Jones. Oh, oh, sorry, Linda, go ahead.
Oh, sorry about that councillor Jones and and thank you, worship. I actually met with the fire department today. I got to meet with the deputy chief and fire chief. We had a good meeting and there's a couple of things that they really need. Um bunker gear is a priority for the firefighters. There are, they are in need of three more sets. Full sets, so that allows all the trained certified firefighters to be able to go into the hot zone of of a fire. So just wanted to put that towards uh our discussions for budget time. Um budget fittings of, we got to look at fittings. We need seven more for um for the main hydrants. These apparently we have three different threads, I've learned, and um these new fittings are universal. So anyone, all the hoses will be able to fit these fittings, so we need to order seven more of those to get get everything up to par. Uh uh see here. We um other than that, there's a few other things. They're looking at truck five and truck two has been a lot of discussion. So we'll see a lot more information on that in in the budget. And uh we're going to start meeting more regular um every month and uh so. But they also invited all council to come take a peek at the fire hall and come see them if you have any questions and stuff like that. Regarding any, anything at the fire hall there, but uh, yeah, and I also want to welcome Kyle to the team. Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Linda. Uh now we'll go to uh councillor Jones for pure.
If I may, your worship.
Go ahead.
Hit my hand up. You just didn't notice me. I just wanted to ask Linda a question about the fire hydrants. Linda, is this something that uh? Is to make it adaptable for other fire departments or is there some of our hydrants that have the wrong fittings on them? Because there shouldn't be. We had one or two and they were supposed to be fixed, so I'm just wondering if this is some special fitting, so. Some other fire department could come in and hook up. Is that what they are or do you know?
Actually, I I see Kyle is right there. If he could unmute and answer that question, that would be great.
Right here. Um when they put the new hydrants in on Duke Street, Brenton, our four-inch valve didn't fit on them because it had a different thread pattern.
Yes.
Uh the town has bought five Stort's fittings, four Stort's fittings that are universal for our neighboring departments to come in.
Okay.
So instead of have a different thread patterns for each department, if we have the four-inch Stort's fittings, any mutual aid. Department that comes to Oxford will be able to tie on to those hydrants.
So Kyle, the ones that are there now are right for you fellas, correct?
Uh as far as we know.
Yeah, because they were supposed to be.
Yes, we have five, five hydrants now that have the Stort's fittings on.
Right.
And then there's the other thread patterns that I think we can adapt to most of them.
Because the ones that are there that they put in new were supposed to have had adapters put on them. That's why I'm asking. And I made the phone call and they were supposed to come here and put the right fittings on them. But right now, as far as you know, you guys can hook on to all them new hydrants. It's just something for other fire departments?
The ones on Duke Street we can now because those new Stort's fittings are on them.
Okay.
So there's five hydrants in Oxford with those Stort's fittings and we like to have another seven of our high-risk areas that we identified.
Okay, oh, he sets out, I was wondering, because when they first put them in, I know they were wrong.
Yes.
And I made a phone call and they said they would, they would come up immediately and change them, so, okay, thank you.
Yeah, those are, those are done.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm going to try to go to councillor Jones one more time. Procurement.
Well, the only, the only thing on procurement that's uh right away is uh we tried another owl. Uh meeting owl and Linda can maybe uh, she tested it tonight, so that could be something that we could uh have COVID money. Put towards uh if council agrees. So go ahead, Linda.
Thank you councillor Jones. Uh yeah, so we tested the meeting owl today and it gives us, we have a large room there. So when all councils in with those, with the dust and everything, it it looks like we need the other owl to pair. And with the, having the two there, it it brings everyone closer together. And so you can see people closer and it seems to be a little more reactive. Um so as we're talking, it will zoom in. On the person talking uh quicker. Uh so we just noticed it, it was more enhanced when we paired the two owls together, so. It looks like it would be a better fit uh to uh make it uh a better meeting uh for everyone more efficient. Um if we went with the two owls. And we do have the COVID money there to allow for that if council so chooses.
So could I make a motion to uh to spend that money for that second owl?
Just like I got uh councillor Colburn seems to have a question.
Okay, sorry.
It's just a question. I may have left the room or dozed off. I don't know which, but what is owl?
The owl is is what we use to um to conference the meetings when we're in person. And so that way we can zoom out and you all don't have to have your tablets.
So what does it stand for?
Oh, I don't know. It it actually looks like a little owl. It.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I don't know what it stands for.
Okay, thank you. I guess it's not just me then.
No.
Back to councillor Jones.
Now, I was just going to make the motion to purchase a second owl for for the meeting room there in Oxford and uh and use the COVID money for that.
Uh can we do that in the middle of a committee report, Linda? Okay, do we have a second or for that motion? Uh I see three hands. I'll pick councillor Colton because he asked the owl question. All those in favor of making that purchase, please raise your hand. Okay, motion carried. Thank you. Uh next up, we'll go to public works and councillor Jones, I have you down as. Chairperson, so.
Uh not too much to report. We we accepted the report from Wes. Uh we are going over a priority list for. Snow removal, just to make sure that the fire hydrants are cleaned out as uh councillor Colburn had had suggested there. Um but that's about it for right now.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh next up, recreation councillor McNutt, where are you? There you are. Go ahead, please, councillor.
Uh so we had already spoken about it a little bit, but uh just to put it out there again that we received the. ACOA Canada Community Revitalization Fund for our baseball field of fifteen thousand dollars. So minor baseball is going to um buy some fencing and backstop and things and really create a full second field. Behind the first field, so that'll be awesome for them for this summer. Um really, it doesn't have anything to do with recreation, but just to put it in the meeting in case anyone didn't see it on um social media. But the rank revitalization fund, we received that ninety-two thousand, seven hundred and thirty-three dollars, so that was huge for our town and our recreation. Um next month is African Heritage Month, so I've reached out to um a local Oxford resident to give me a hand. And we're going to try and do maybe some social media posts uh of that. It's because of COVID, we really can't do anything in person. Um but hoping to maybe have um some posts over the month of February celebrating African Heritage Month. And we are also hopefully going to have some March break events um for the kids. With COVID, we have absolutely no idea, but we're, we've got the money, we've got the time, we've got the. With COVID, we have absolutely no idea, but we're, we've got the money, we've got the time, we've got the um, uh, volunteers who are interested, so we're gonna start planning and we'll see what happens. But things will be planned and then once it gets closer, we'll decide whether we can follow through. But as long as we do outside and social distancing and masks and all that stuff, hopefully we'll be able to have something for March break.
Crystal, I was just gonna put in there too, if you do plan for it and you've spent money and uh, you have a prediction of revenues, we can put that against COVID dollars if it falls through at the last minute because COVID. Cause uh, the rink is also doing that because there's been several times this year, they have things booked, they get canceled and it's a loss of revenue for us, uh, was a lost revenue for them.
Right, right.
So it can come out of COVID dollars, so.
Okay, good to know.
No fear planning it, it's, and um, then we'll deal with the follow through.
Okay, perfect, all right, thanks, that's it for me.
Okay, councillor Colburn, you got a question, I see your hand up.
Yes, I have a question for councillor McNutt, did councillor McNutt, did you ever have a meeting with the fire department and the ball association to find out whether they can or cannot uh, use that field next year?
Yes, we had a meeting probably a couple of months ago, um, we had some baseball people there, I was there, Wes was there and some firefighters and um, there's gonna be tons of room and it actually is gonna work out better for them because their insurance, I hope I'm getting this right Kyle and uh, uh, the fire chief are gone now, but uh, their insurance says that they need spectators for these, are they horse pulls? Horse pulls?
Yes.
The spectators need to be behind some sort of a barricade. Um, so this new fencing for this second field will be the perfect barricade. So people will sit inside the second ball field and look out to the horse pulls. So we jokingly said that the fire department should, you know, help us fundraise money for this fencing if it's gonna in turn help them. Well, we got a fifteen thousand dollar grant, so we're okay anyway, so it actually is gonna work out great. And, and they were hoping that they'll have, you know, multiple horse pulls next year because they have the room and, and it was such a success. So hopefully we'll be able to figure it all out.
Yeah, they really did, well, that's great, it works out great for everybody.
Yeah.
Great, thank you. Next up, uh, building, town buildings committee. Um, basically, we're looking at new heat for the town hall, the system we have has cost us around the leg over the last two years and it's it's gotten to the point of being absolutely ridiculous, so it's time to fix it, we have to replace it. Cause it's a dog and it's costing us more money than a new one. So uh, that's about all I have for the town building committee, uh, any of you other members have anything to add? No, no, no. Uh, next up, um, town services committee, uh, chairperson councillor Jones.
Uh, the only thing on there, your worship, is the new flow meter that uh, we've ordered uh, for the water and it'll uh, it'll, you know, register exactly what water's being used, so. Uh, is that in yet, uh, Linda or it's on order?
I did put it in the budget.
It's in the budget, but it, it's not installed yet.
Right, yes, it's not installed, just ordered, but not installed.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, uh, next up redevelopment website committee councillor, deputy mayor Ed. Do you wanna say a word or two about that?
Um, we had a meeting here a few weeks ago and um, Mark Russian was in attendance along with the mayor and Linda. Um, we're moving forward with a new website, uh, it's in the works, I guess, in April, sometime in April. When we're going live, so that's all I have to report.
Okay, thank you. Uh, correspondence is, oh, do we need a motion to accept those committee reports, Linda? Yes, uh, moved by councillor Jones, signed by councillor McNutt, all those in favor? Raise a hand, motion carried. Thank you, everybody, for the reports correspondence in your package. You received uh, a letter from, who was it from, equity and anti-racism legislation. Uh, they're looking for the public's feedback, uh, Linda, would you kindly post that, that, what they sent us on both our town website and our Facebook site? So anybody interested in participating in this, uh, did, that, they wanted our input. So it's open to all members of the public, not just town council, am I correct in that Linda? Okay, great.
Uh, yeah, they're looking to invite all Nova Scotians, so anyone uh, that would like to uh, speak. Um, they're looking for any feedback on the proposed equity and anti-racism legislation that's being developed. So uh, it's, it's uh, it would be nice to uh, get all our voices heard on that.
Okay, uh, next on the agenda, we have a legal matter, so we'll have to win camera, but before I do that because normally when we come out of camera, Facebook doesn't pick us up again. So you might not see the end of the meeting, I just wanna mention there is a special town council meeting set for January twenty-seventh for the second reading of the solid waste bylaw at six P M, that will be on Facebook bullet, Linda, Zoom live. There's a will, so if anybody's interested, that will be there this Thursday night. And I wanna thank everybody for tuning in and catching up on what's going on in town and now I'm going, do we need a motion with the camera?
Yes.
Yes, I need someone to move it, moved by councillor Jones, signed by councillor McNutt, and we're in camera.